And you know, we're not even allowed to wear the hot sticks. We can test them here, see if they're high or low. Because if they're on a 23KV and they've got an inexperienced kind of a hot stick, that's a bad deal. So we have certain operational links to work around to keep everybody safe.
This meeting is called to order. We want to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting for the city of Covington, June 7th, 2022. And if you have your phones, if you can turn them off or silent would be appreciated. Road call, please.
Councilman Lewis, Councilman Botford, Councilman Roberts.
Here.
Councilwoman Ludwig.
Here.
Councilman Verrett.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Rowling.
Here. If everybody would stand for a moment of silence, please. And would Police Chief Michael Farrell lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. On the agenda tonight, we have a couple of up-iras. And I would ask that if you are up-ira tonight, if you put it to around five minutes would be appreciated. And if you need to finish up in a couple of minutes, we'll let you do that. So first off, on the agenda, we had Ms. Julie Egan from Coast, Council on Aging. She is rescheduled for July. So we're going to go, we're going to move right on to Ms. Dory Kelly with the North Shore Endoring Hope. And Councilman Verrett?
Yes, Dory, thanks for being here. She's going to talk about a new resource for local children in need.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dory Kelly. I live at 99 Bogafalaya Drive in Covington. My husband Robbie and I have five children. We have fostered for 10 years. We've had 19 fostered children, and we've adopted three. When we got into fostering, right at 10 years ago, we quickly realized that the need for foster families was enormous, but also the need for resources was even larger than that. Soon after we started fostering, we started a support group for foster families so they could connect and keep the siblings together because there was no such thing as a support group. And there was no such thing as a resource center or resources for children in foster care. So we started providing resources. We just gathered our friends and family members, and we started providing resources for children in foster care. It grew out of my home and into storage units on Highway 59. And for about three years, we had one storage unit, then two, then three. And then my husband and I were like, this is crazy. So we opened a resource center four years ago on Highway 59. It's not open to the public. It's just by appointment only, and it's run. North Shore Endoring Hope is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Everybody who serves, including myself, is a volunteer, and no one is paid. Every dollar that comes in is a dollar that goes out to provide resources. We pay for the overhead at the resource center, and that's it. It is by appointment only, like I said. It's run by volunteers. Whoever calls, we make an appointment, and they can come in. It's set up like a retail boutique store. It's not a thrift store or goodwill. We do not give out ugly nasty trash. Our donations are new or like-new only because these children have been through enough, and I want to bless them and make them feel special. So that's what we do at the resource center. It's located on Highway 59. The kids can come and pick out anything from school supplies, uniforms, bedding, clothes, toiletries, toys, baby items, wipes, diapers, things of that nature. We're strictly supported by our community, by churches, two churches in our area, by small groups, and by businesses, by friends, and by family. And I'd like to just let you know, I sent y'all out, I think Ms. Joanne handed out some brochures. Our Covington region, the state is broken up into nine regions with DCSF, and we're Covington region. We're made up of five Florida parishes. Our Covington region has the most children in care in the state of Louisiana, and we've been that way for 10 years in a row. Covington region has never been number two. It's always been number one on the list with children in care. And children zero to four, white children, are the most highest percentage that are in care in our region. And out of the five Florida parishes, St. Tammany has the highest number of children in our region. So the need is enormous here. We're the only resource center, so I would just like you to read up about it a little bit, support it, and tell your family and friends about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Next, we have Ms. Tiffany Ciprian, talking about permits tonight. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany McGary Ciprian, 46348 North Baptist Road, Hammond, Louisiana. And I'm here for a follow-up from when I was here in April. I came to the last council meeting in May, and the day prior to the meeting, I went into the office to see Ms. Joanne because I had not heard anything about a follow-up from the investigation that was advised in the last council meeting in April that I would get a follow-up. So I went in the day before the meeting in May, and I met with Ms. Joanne and talked to her, and she made a call, and she gave me a printout of an email that came from Mr. Chris Brown to Ms. Erin. It was not to me. Nobody had contacted me prior to that. I did do a public records request on the four properties that I had presented, and they all had a final move-in inspection that was approved with the air-conditioning units not being bolted down. So it's still a concern for me as to, you know, why we was dinged, and we paid an extra fee for that. So I just wanted to follow up since no one had contacted me. And I know Mr. Verrett had mentioned in April that we would have a month follow-up. And I did come in May, and I didn't have anything. So I just wanted to come back.
Well, I know Councilman Lewis is not here tonight, so I wasn't sure what he did find out from administration. But does administration have anything to say to Ms. Ciprian at this point?
Based on the letter that we received, I asked the permits department, specifically Chris Brown, to answer the questions in the letter, and I reported back to the council as requested with that memo.
So without Councilman Lewis being here tonight, I'm not sure. So did he get that information that she is talking about to share with you?
I got that from Ms. Joanne when I came in the day before the May meeting.
Okay. So is it not satisfactory? Or what information are you reading?
The only thing that was in that letter, and I think everybody, they said the council had gotten it, was the answer to the questions about my steps on how someone is to go about getting the proper permits and the timeframe and things like that. But there was a final move-in inspection that was approved, but we were denied. That was my concern initially.
I mean... Okay. So I'm not, again, did Councilman Lewis share any additional information, or did he look into it a little bit deeper? Because I know he's sponsoring you coming in here today, so I'm not trying to...
I'm not sure. After that letter, I'm not sure. But I will get with him. But my concern is that if there was an investigation, and it's been two months, somebody should have called me or, you know, asked me my input or called me in. I mean, I was available. If I wouldn't have came the day before the May meeting and talked to Ms. Joanne, I wouldn't have even gotten a copy of the email that wasn't even addressed to me. I just, I mean, again, that's protocol, process, you know, a standard, so...
Does anybody on the council have anything to add to this at this point? My recommendation at this point, and again, with Councilman Lewis not here to ask him any questions about that, if he's, what he received or whatnot, my recommendation is maybe we get together with you. I'll be more than happy to be there also with the administration and Councilman Lewis and maybe Councilman Smith, maybe sit down to see where the loose ends are, if any, and we can kind of get this squared away one way or other.
Yeah, I mean, we can have a regular meeting. I don't need to come to a council meeting. It's just, I mean...
Ms. Tiffany, let me ask you, eventually, did you get your approval?
Yeah, we did get the approval, but we had to pay a ken too.
So Chris Brown, I'm assuming, explained what was missing, what needed to be done, and you all followed through, and you get the approval?
Yeah, that the air condition needed to be bolted, but we had to pay an extra fee.
Your, if I'm understanding, your question or concern is why did other people get approved and did not, and had the same problem?
Correct. And when the letter on the response, it says, when Chris Brown sent the letter responding to the questions that I had, everybody is under the same protocol. So that was my question.
Everybody's got to follow the same code.
Correct.
To be approved. And is it possible that he went back already? And I don't know this because we, as a council person, I don't go to Chris Brown to follow up on these, you know, every step. Maybe, maybe those other air-conditioning units were bolted as they maybe should have been the first go-around. I'm not saying they were or weren't, but that's more than likely would have placed, if you had asked me, would have taken. So everybody's got their approval, as far as I'm concerned, right? You're approved, you got your permit and approved, and the houses that you were questioning, did you do, did you sneak around there and see if maybe they got bolted down?
No, and I didn't sneak to go look at the beginning because they're related, so...
If it were, if it were a human error and some kind of inspection was missed on the act, I'm assuming that those things have been rectified, taken care of, and that their permits are granted as well as yours were.
Their permits was granted before then. That's what, this has been over a year that I initially put in the request.
Right. And they may have gone back and made sure that those problems were taken care of. But we can check that out. That's something that Councilman Lewis and you have been talking about. I'm sure he'll be happy to go sit down with Chris Brown and make sure everything was taken care of.
Yeah, we could have done that when the investigation was done. We all could have sat and talked and got it over. But okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Just a second. We really, not doing up-iras, we really don't have public comments.
Can you shed some clarification on it real, and quickly, timely fashion?
Cecil Hudson, Hudson Solutions Group. I am the contractor that she's referencing. And we immediately, the day after the council meeting, responded in an email and sent out an investigation team for all of the projects that were alleged. We are required to, the code requires us to put at least one fastening device in the condenser unit that's outside, which we complied with every one of those. Ray Treadwell, Ray Treadway is your contract, is your contract inspector for electric and HVAC. We have since changed our protocol because the allegations say that our units were not fastened, and we have our final inspection and occupancy based on an erroneous inspection. So we went back and changed our protocol to actually what now we do is we actually take L brackets and fasten those units down. So there's three points of fastening to the, and we put all of our units on a raised platform. So we immediately attentioned that allegation. We confirmed that we did comply, and we changed our protocol to go above and beyond the requirement. And that, there was multiple emails, Council, Council Lewis, Chris Brown, Mayor Mark, and several of you. Any other questions?
No. Thank you. And it's hard to, and the reason why, I mean, if the public's wondering why we don't really have public input on up-iras is because we might not have all the parties in this, in this room to go ahead and go through each element of something like this. If that's the case, this should have been put on the agenda as a discussion item, and then, then the public can have some input in that. So I didn't want to be disrespectful, but I'm just going through procedure. And, you know, in the future, if Councilman Lewis or anyone else wants to put something like this on a discussion item, we can have all parties here available. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move right on to consent calendar. The regular meeting minutes, May 3rd of 2022. Introduction of Item Number 20220601. An ordinance of the city of Covington providing an increase in compensation for the city council of the city of Covington, which increase will become effective July 1 of 2023. Introduction of Item Number 20220602. An ordinance of the city of Covington to amend the 2022 capital and operating budget. Item Number D, which is introduction of Item Number 20220603. An ordinance of the city of Covington levying and imposing and adopting the millage rates on all property subject to taxation in the city of Covington, state of Louisiana, for the year 2022. I would need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Road call, please.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludwig.
Yes.
Councilman Verrett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes. Short tonight, huh? With the road call. Okay. Going right into our regular agenda. Item Number 1. Public Hearing Action Number 20220501. An Ordinance Amending Section 2-206, the City of Covington Code of Ordinances, to revise the dollar threshold for requests for proposals for selection of professional contract services. Councilman Smith.
Okay, thank you. It was brought to my attention by the administration that we may want to consider updating this ordinance. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that over the last 10, 12, 15 years, the cost of everything has gone, what? Skyrocketed, right? Well, every time that we needed to do something for the city, it's more hassle and time delays, et cetera, to get something accomplished because anything over $20,000 requires umpteen different things that need to be done. You need to put out a request for bids, et cetera. And it takes, it's very time-consuming. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money when you look at the city budget, but what we are looking at is maybe making this process a lot more efficient, okay? Freeing up time that administration could do something that may be more productive, but they got to spend a lot of hours dealing with the paperwork, et cetera. I just thought it was, it just made a lot of common sense that, you know, when you consider the inflation and the cost of goods and everything else, that this up the threshold, you know, and again, 10 years from now, 12 years, 15 years from now, they may be talking, they may be talking about $80,000. But today, I would like to suggest that we ought to really consider adopting this and moving the threshold number from $20,000 to $50,000 before we start that long drawn-out process. I just think it makes sense. If anybody's got questions, I'd be happy to keep on talking.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to open up the public hearing at this time, and then we'll have council comments also. Anybody from the public that would like to talk on behalf of this? Seeing none? Okay, council. Any comments?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that it doesn't affect anyone either, it's just protocol for us to be able to ask to get things done. Everything we ask is over $20,000, it seems like, so it just makes sense to do this to 50, so that we can get more efficient, as he said, to move forward, so I think it's perfect.
Councilman Ludbrook?
Yeah, I was just curious, and I only thought of it now, or I sort of emailed prior. What is, is that an average typically, or it just totally depends on the scope of the project?
It depends on the scope.
Okay.
I can tell you that the majority of our professional service contracts are selected off of a requalified business, which is primarily engineers. Occasionally, you have projects that don't fall within that, and so we have to identify some, and you have to go through the full RFP process and.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Anything else?
I was wondering, what you thought, is whether it's valid or, or up against the 50?
Yes, ma'am.
That's more than double, I think, you have to find a compromise. I mean, that's a lot more.
Administration, you want to just, you seeing this more than we are, I mean, any comments on that?
She raises, obviously, a good question. The $20,000 amount was set when Candace Watkins was the mayor. And so, yeah, we, we could have maybe gone from, five years ago, from 20 to 40, and now we'd be going from 40 to 50. So, it's really got to do with that span of time, and as Councilman Smith said, the prices have just got, we can hardly get professional services for under $20,000. So, I appreciate you bringing this up.
Yeah, that does make sense on the time span, because really, it should have been changed maybe years ago to be a little bit closer to where it should be. Yeah, but it hasn't, so, does that answer your question?
I mean, we're speaking about, we're not going to be able to be more productive with our time. I don't think, what's the more productive, like, I mean, I mean, put out the.
Was the administration?
Yeah, and that was my concern, is that it's not an inflection on anybody to do in the public eye, it is just the amount of money we're allowed to say, let's move forward with something. If it's over $20,000, as Councilman Smith was saying, the protocol just takes too much time away from everything we do. If we up that to 50, it allows us more of an opportunity to move faster on getting things done, but it does not fall back on the citizens at all. It's just a threshold.
And if I could input, it really is not affecting the council, it's affecting administration. They're the full-time people that are sitting at City Hall, working all day long, and it eliminates a lot of steps that really, you know, we can go through it, which is still going to get approved, it's just going to be approved two, three months down the road, as opposed to getting it done next week. And we can have a project taken care of, or we can have an engineering firm looking into something that we hope to be able to achieve. Now, yeah, to your point, it's going from 20 to 50, so it's more than double. You know, we couldn't put 40. The point is, it's not going to stay at 40 either, okay? 10 years from now, somebody's going to say, man, we should have changed this, is what I'm getting to. I know, you know, my household expenses over the last 12 years have gone up pretty substantial, and it kind of works the same way here. You know, when we need something done, or we need professional advice, or we need to get, get an expert, that, that charges are going through the roof.
And oftentimes.
So, it just, it delays, it's a delay of getting good things.
To just sit there, waiting and going through all the red tape, so this just, you know, if it's a drainage thing or whatever, we need to get it done prior to, more or less preventative, I guess, instead of reactive. The quicker we can do that, the better.
Besides engineers, what kind of professional contracts is that?
If you want to come up and figure your question?
Okay, what?
You want to come up?
That's it, that's it. Besides engineers, what other type of professional we offer?
Administration?
We have engaged, like I said, we have mostly engineers, I don't know who's talking, so, hi. So, we have engaged architects to do ADA compliance reviews. Currently, we have an interrealm IT contract in place while we complete an RFP for a five-year IT contractor, and so that falls within it, and I can tell you that with, at a $20,000 cap right now, it has been very difficult to maintain the level of service that we are accustomed to, just for two months. And so, that's a perfect example of how that threshold can, can, I guess, compromise our ability to provide the best quality service that we can.
And if I, just because the threshold is moving to $50,000, do not think that the Finance Committee on the City Council doesn't go over this stuff with a fine tooth comb. We're not going to let $50,000 being tossed aside and think it's insignificant amount, okay?
I can assure you that with every project, we look for cost savings everywhere. The mayor personally looks at these projects. We try to establish cost estimates beforehand, so we know that if a proposal comes in, we can assess if it's reasonable or not. I mean, that's just part of what we do in government.
All right.
And let me just say.
Just to interject a little bit, a sense of humor, Mark, so I'm probably beating you to this. An hour ago, it was 82 degrees in here. Thankfully, the air condition repair people didn't charge more than $20,000, so we'd all be sitting here sweating right now.
That's true. But I would have moved to expedited. I think, I think listening to this, the main point that I want to make to you is, it's not that it's going from 20 to 50 with no oversight, and I think that's, that's the difference. We go through this budget tedious, and we're about to start another budget process and a proposal, we go through these and we stay on it. So, it's not that there's no oversight, it's just that it's a, it's a multi-step process that takes way too much time, so it's hard for me to explain as a councilman why, on a $20,000, $22,000 project, we're waiting months and months to advertise and do what all we need to do. But there's oversight, and I think that's the message that I'd like to give, and I'm assuming that's where you were going.
Excuse, I may have missed the student related to the administration. I thought her to say something about five-year IT contract, did I miss something?
Yes, we just put out an RFP for a five-year IT contract.
Well, something like that, if that's over $50,000, is that, or less than 50,000, that, that all this, this, this.
It's over, it's over $50,000, so it's a formal request of proposal that was advertised for a proposal.
But on-term contract, they would fall under $50,000, which is possibly, you see, would, would possibly, would that fall on the, this sort of?
It would, it depends on the.
Great questions. Any other questions from the public? Okay, hearing none. Any objection for close the public hearing? If not, I need a motion to close.
Motion closed.
And a second, please?
Second.
I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ludbrook?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move right into new business. Let's see, resolution number 2022-09, a resolution of the Covington City Council selecting the official journal of the City of Covington for a term of one year. People probably, if you've come to our meetings before, it happens every year, we have to select a journal, an official journal for the City of Covington, so all the legal documents and announcements go in there, and obviously, you know, the farmer has done it for years after years after years, and now the advocate, still the farmer in our eyes, and obviously, they, they the choice that we, we selected, and I don't know if there's any other ones anyway, but that being said, they've done a great job for us in the City of Covington, and they represent the city very well. So, that being said, I'm going to open it up, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, anything from the council?
Yes. I wish you would go back to the former days when we did have the farmer, okay? But now, I'm looking in the back, back there, you know, we, you talk about oversight for money, we spend a lot more money today every time we got to do an advertisement, okay? The price has skyrocketed, so, but you really don't have any place to shop, because the advocate owns, owns all the newspapers. So, to me, it's frustrating. When I hear how much money we have to advertise on something, it, it just, as a taxpayer, I don't like it, but, you know, maybe one day we'll have somebody start a new newspaper, who knows? But anyway, I wanted to vent, thank you all.
We appreciate that. Anything else, nothing from the public, any other council comments? Okay, see, we don't have any other comments, so I need a motion to accept, please.
Motion to accept.
I need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludbrook?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to our next resolution, resolution number 2022-10, a resolution of the Covington City Council confirming the Councilman-at-Large appointment, Pat Stelz, to the Covington Tree Board for a term of three years. Councilman Smith?
Yes, unfortunately, Ms. Stelz couldn't be here tonight, but she has graciously volunteered to serve on this board, she's well qualified, she's got a nursery, she knows a lot more about trees and such than most of us, okay? And it's unfortunate she couldn't be here tonight, but I did speak to her earlier, as I believe, Council Clerk, Ms. Rucker, you spoke to her, she's still very enthused about volunteering her time to be part of the tree board. So, with that said, I think she's a, she's a great appointee.
Thank you for that. Anyone from the public that I'd like to have a comment? Seeing none, hearing none, any, any council comments? Pat? Pat's?
Stelz.
Stelz.
Pat Stelz.
Yeah. And it's spelled S-T-E-L-Z. Okay, so that being said, one thing real quick before we get a motion for this, I know I talked to administration today about doing like a website update on our tree board, because we have a lot of the public that would want to know a little bit about our tree board and what they do and things like that. So, do you want to brief us really quick on that?
Sure, sure. I think it was a couple of months ago that the tree board came to the council meeting to discuss their purpose, and they mentioned that they would like to have a page on our, our city website, and so, we have worked with them specifically, Serata and Cultural Arts and Events, and Josh, they have coordinated with Mr. Bruce Davis and the rest, Davidson and the rest of the tree board, they provided us with information on what they would like to see on the webpage that was given over to Serata, and they have now put a page together for their review, and it is live, so if you're interested, you can look at it, I looked at it today.
Appreciate that.
Uh huh.
Okay, if any have no other comments, I need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludbrook?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
All right, moving on, resolution number 2022-11, a resolution of the Covington City Council urging the Louisiana Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority to mitigate to the fullest extent possible the impacts of constructing and operating the mid-barataria sediment diversion. Councilman Verrett?
At this time, I'd like to table this resolution, and we'll set it on a different agenda with the speaker.
Okay, this, this will be tabled, and to further notice, thank you. Okay, moving on, resolution number 2022-12, a resolution of the Covington City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an cooperative endeavor agreement with God's unchanging hands feeding ministry for creation and maintenance of an educational community garden of city-operated property. Woo, okay, got through it. Anyway, that being said, administration, I know Councilman Lewis isn't here tonight, so I know you have some background on this, thank you.
And I worked with Councilman Lewis on this. Ms. Pamela McKay came and provided a presentation on her community garden a couple of months ago, and so, we have been working with her to put together a draft of a CEA. This is similar to the other community garden, and that is a partnership between, it's a proposed partnership between the city and the community garden. The reason we need to put a cooperative endeavor agreement in place is because the city is providing city resources, such as utilities like water, electricity, that are supplied to the garden, and in exchange, the community benefits from what comes out of the garden. Ms. Pamela McKay, sitting right over here. You want to, you want to say anything, Rucker?
State your name and address, please.
My name is Pamela McKay, 1101 Colbert Street, Mandeville, 70448.
Do you want to tell, tell us a little bit?
Oh. Okay. This is to help children learn where our food comes from and what it means to our bodies. And then it helps with them actually learning how to plant the plants, where it comes from, what it, what minerals and vitamins it all holds in, and teaching us how to eat more healthy. I think growing natural foods helps us better with our health, and teaching our kids now how to do it is a great thing for them, because if we don't teach them now, they, we will not be able to have any food supply, or our children to be leading the next step in our lives. And it, I think it's a great benefit for, for all of us, not just for the kids, but for the kids to have some type of activity, I believe that it really helps them with their depression and.
No, we appreciate that, and we appreciate all you do for the community, too, because I know you do a lot. Review the location again for everyone if they didn't hear.
1025 West 30th Avenue, 30th and Jackson.
So, if anybody's in the area, they can kind of stop by and look.
We're there in the evening, mainly because of the heat.
Yes.
And so, around 6:00, 6:30, where it's a group of people that live in this community that come out and help with this, actually, it's encouraged families to put gardens in their yard, and we're willing to come in and build up a team to help you get started with that and teach you every step of the way of how you're to plant and what it means each season for each plant to grow.
Well, thank you for everything you do. Any, council, any other questions from Ms. Pamela? We appreciate it, thank you so much.
Well worth it, well endeavor.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public that has any comments on this? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I need a motion, please, to accept.
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ludbrook?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, items for discussion in tonight's agenda. First off, we have Police Chief Michael Farrell, I know he's in, in the room. Thank you, sir.
All right, good evening, thank you all for having me. I'm just going to go over a couple of things that the PD is working on right now for the summertime months. We're currently utilizing the summer break with the schools being out to, to train our offices with the active shooter responses, as we, you know, we know what's going on around the nation right now, and ending the school year, so we want to make sure that they, they have all the tools and, and training they need to respond to such a thing. We also offer, it's called the Alert Training, which trains the school resource, I mean, the school personnel, teachers, principals and whatnot, on how to, how to respond to such an event also. So, we offered that to the school board, we're just waiting, you know, for them to give us the blessing. We have a kids camp coming up, July 11th through the 15th, to, you know, so we offer that to all of the kids within the, within the area. We're getting a pretty good response so far, we're gonna, it's going to involve also the, the Boys and Girls Club, so all the kids there, who would be involved in the camp also. Our dear officer right now is in full swing for the summer, he's passing out basketballs, footballs and soccer balls throughout the community, get to know the kids, and so they can get to know him also, so that, that's, that's going out very well also. We have an officer that's assigned to community policing, so you may see him, it's going to be Lieutenant Blunt, you see him going around the communities, shaking hands, getting to know who's who. We all know, we saw an uptick in shootings, shooting events, people just firing weapons. They're not necessarily hitting anything, but they are firing weapons in the grid nine area. But that's not due to us not policing them, you know. Within the last year, our offices recovered over 38 illegally possessed firearms out of the area. So we are doing our best to try to, you know, to get this under control, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of it, but you're still gonna have some folks out there who is hell-bent on wreaking havoc. But I can tell you this, we're hell-bent on stopping them. So we will continue to do our part. But we do need, you know, we ask for help from the community. It's, we gotta do this together. So that's why we have our tip line still. We, you know, we want to remind folks, if they have, if they see something, they can leave an anonymous tip. They can go to, it's, you can text CPDLA to 847411. It's an anonymous tip, it goes to a supervisor, and it, you know, and they will respond accordingly. We are in the process also strategically placing crime cams throughout the high-crime areas. We're working with Cleco, our Public Works, and a local electric company to get that done. That's been one delay after another though. Ida came, knocked out our test cams, and then we had some other hurdles to go through, but we are finally getting that done. So hopefully, that'll be done within the next month or so. Other than that, that's pretty much all we have for the PD. If y'all have any questions?
Yeah, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I heard on the way over here, obviously summertime has hit. All you juveniles are out roaming the streets?
Yes.
And there is a curfew that we need to know about. Do you have the times off the top of your head?
Yes, sir.
Please share that with us.
Yeah, we just, we just put it on our website today, on our Facebook page during the week is 11, I'm sorry. It's, yes, it's 11 to 6 at night, and during the weekend, it's 12 to 6.
Okay.
12 to 5, sorry.
Good deal. That's perfect.
17 and under, you know, we ask that you have your kids inside, because normally that's the problem.
Yep.
You know, they're out there looking for something to do, and they get themselves in trouble.
Right.
So.
Thank you. I just wanted to share.
And on that same note, with kids being out of school, I've noticed an uptick in kids on golf carts, okay? And my hope is that we, you know, my biggest concern is, I think anybody who wants to drive a street legal golf cart has the right to do that, providing they got insurance and they're licensed.
Yes.
Okay? And I know there's no way these 10, 12-year-old kids are licensed. I would ask that you would speak to your officers?
Yes.
And try and emphasize that these kids, it's definitely, they're definitely out there. I see them every day.
Yeah.
And, you know, hey, let's go visit your mom and dad right now, okay? And let's go have a talk with the parents?
Yep.
And let them know, you know, there's a distinct difference between a street legal mayor of the city with a license driving a golf cart versus a 12-year-old kid with three of their buddies on the back. That's the first thing. Secondly, I've got tons, and I mentioned to you this a little before the meeting, it, I get it, because two years ago, they were on my front porch knocking on my door, this door-to-door solicitation that it's driving a lot of women that are home alone. It's making them fearful. And they are, I'm not saying they're all rude, but the ones that I came across are kind of rude and aggressive. I don't really, you're familiar with what I'm talking about right now?
Yes.
I know you had some officers go approach somebody back off of Riverbend Lane yesterday.
I heard, I heard a call.
I don't even know what their, what's their claim? What kind of scam? Is it a scam they're running? What's the deal? What are they selling?
I don't even know what they're selling right now. They're selling a little bit of everything, unfortunately.
One, for example, one couple was sitting in their backyard, and they hear somebody yelling at their wooden fence, "Help! Help me! Help me!" They go out there, that's how they got their attention. They went out there to see if somebody needed help, and there's two people that sit there and intimidate them. You know how they got rid of them? Gave them cash. You know, I said, "What was it for?" We don't really know. He needed points. You know, I'm thinking, you know, maybe this is a council issue. We might, I pulled up the ordinance that we have for solicitation.
So Rick, I can speak to that from when I worked for the city, and we tried to mediate this a while back, like previous administration with Gina Hayes looked into it a lot. There was some vacuum salesmen's around, and unfortunately, there was, it's like a free speech situation that the city of Covington is not allowed to officially...
Well, here's what we can. You know, they need to be permitted, which I'm assuming they're doing, getting their permits through the city, and we do some kind of background research. But the timeframe, you know, we looked at the ordinance, I looked at the ordinance today, and it says they can, they can go door-to-door between, I believe, 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. during Central Standard Time.
Yeah, we just recently posted it.
But the timeframe goes from 10:00 to 8:00 p.m. during daylight savings time, which runs from March through November. I'm the one that said we need to amend that, and let's cut it down to 6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m. comes around, I don't care what you're selling, what cause, profit, nonprofit, you don't knock on people's doors unless you get an appointment with them, okay?
Yeah.
And I think that's something we need to consider. But Chief, I would like for, they're supposed to be identifying themselves. The people I've spoken to today said they didn't have any identification, and most of the time, they really didn't know what the heck they were there for, other than they were hustling to get money. And, you know, you gotta, my wife were home alone, and they answered the door and had that situation, she'd be scared.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, we just, we just posted on our Facebook pages recently.
Yeah, we did. Let me interject here.
Yes, sir.
I also got that call yesterday over by Riverbend, and I want to reiterate what Chief said earlier. This is a perfect time to use the text messaging system, because I texted, it went to a supervisor. I said, "Over on East 10th Avenue, we have solicitors, probably unpermitted, probably after hours," and then you saw PD units rolling over there. So the more of our residents that have that, somebody's at your door, you're not comfortable with it, just don't, just send a text message. We've got them, we've got an officer on the way, and since, and I know everybody knows this, but since the Buttercrisp has closed on Clavon Hill, we've had much better patrol...
I would also ask to...
Motion?
I would ask...
Those are my two concerns, but other than that, I want to congratulate you and you guys. I get nothing but positive feedback.
Sir, thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I was just gonna say one more thing, sorry, on the permitting thing. If we could, if they do get permitted, which honestly, most of them probably don't, but I know we run like a local background check, which a lot of these people come from out of state. But if they are going through the proper permitting purpose, a process, could we make them wear like a badge, like we do the vendors during Mardi Gras, just to kind of, at least? Because I know my kids know not to answer the door, but yeah, I mean, obviously, Rick, I've been home alone, husband goes out of town, whatever. It's frightening, especially when it starts to get dark. So yes, anything we can do from a council standpoint, as far as timing was good, I just, I was not defending them. I just wanted to say, I know that we weren't allowed to outlaw it. Yeah. And it was a vacuum company, and pretty much, we would have had to take them to court, and it was way more money than the city of Covington could afford, so we were hoping maybe a larger city could fight that battle for us. But I guess it's still going on.
We'll be sure to be on the lookout for them, and we'll post the rules once again, you know, just to make sure that it's clear. Sir?
Um, Joanne?
None of those people have been in for a permit to, none of them.
Good.
Yeah, I just asked Ellen, no, there has not been any. And they do have to wear a badge if they come in. So, yeah.
So I think visual is the thing for our department, and also the public, too.
Yes, sir.
If you see something like that, call it in.
That's right.
That's the only way we're gonna stop them, so they know they shouldn't, they shouldn't do it like this. They want to do it the right way. There's a right way, so. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I thought we had something else. Thank you. Okay, next. City of Covington Hurricane Preparation Plan for this year. I know the administration has been working very hard at this. Ms. Erin?
Sure, I'm gonna speak in the mic. So as we all know, Hurricane Ida was a major event for our city. Specifically, it was a wind and tree event, and we learned a lot from that. And we learned some things that we needed to bring back in and, you know, include in our plan. So we made some improvements to our plan based on our experiences. And let me say that we had a very experienced and knowledgeable group of people working through this, and so we were able to get through Ida with a lot of in-house experience and support from some great contractors. But you never go through an event like this without learning something. And that's what we're supposed to do, is you utilize the plan, and then you learn where you can improve. So this is our updated emergency preparedness and response plan. And I call it that because even though we drafted it primarily with hurricanes in mind, that's not the only type of disaster that we could potentially have. We could have a hurricane, a tropical storm, a flood event like we did in 2016, an ice storm, a tornado. And so the plan is laid out in a way that it provides a step-by-step checklist for us to follow. But we know that during the process of preparing or responding for these events, that we have to accept that there will be variations to what the event may look like. So we know that we have to follow these steps, but we know that we also are gonna have to assess and adapt as we work through the event. So just to give you an idea of what's in this plan, so what we did is we outlined basically by timeline what our steps are to prepare for hurricane season, which we've been doing over the past few months. And I'll go back to what those items are. But then we also go into the purpose of an emergency declaration. We go right, you know, preparing for a storm that we know is coming. We go right into before the storm, what happens during the storm, and then how we roll into recovery phase, which is damage assessments, clearing roads, that sort of thing. The plan that we put together, which we intended to act as kind of a checklist for in the field, includes all of the forms that we need. We've updated our forms. We have been working with staff so they understand what's needed for FEMA purposes. We also have included a copy of a duty roster, which assigns employees to specific functions. It identifies who our emergency personnel is gonna be in each department, who is required to shelter if conditions warrant sheltering. And then we also included some clarification on our payroll policies, because there was a little bit of confusion, and that was one room for improvement that we found during the case, during the course of Ida. So I also wanted to explain to you, Joanne, I gave you a handout. If you could give it out to everybody. Oh, okay. So I think it's important for us to understand the relationship between us and our EOC that's located here in Covington, that's the parish EOC. So the Louisiana Homeland Security and Emergency Assistance and Disaster Act, which is actually, they call it the LA Disaster Act, it outlines the structure and roles of state and parish governments. And so basically, what happens during an event is the EOC is activated, and they have spots for up to 40-something liaisons, anything from utility companies to municipalities, to faith-based organizations, Acadian ambulance, and the idea is to get them all in one room so they can communicate face-to-face with each other. So calls come into that EOC, into a call center, and then it is directed to the appropriate agency. So we have two liaisons with the city of Covington that come out of the police department, and they work 12-hour shifts, night and day. And the reason this is important is because, per the act, our relationship with the parish, it's laid out that the parish president is basically running the disaster, okay? That's why the EOC has so much authority. And as we need resources and supplies from the state or parish level, they have to go through that EOC. So it is a coordinated effort. During Ida, we were very self-sufficient, and we didn't really need to rely on the EOC, but I can assure you that we were in communication with Clarence Poe, who is the director of that office, and we communicated about, you know, setting up Red Cross Centers and where we can get, even during that time, COVID tests and things like that. So they were there, and we were in communication. And so the last component of the plan, and we'll go back and do some questions if y'all would like to do that, the last component of the plan is really to talk about our debris contractors. And so we know during Ida, there was a lot of debris. And so what we did in 2020 is we did a full RFP process, and we identified our debris monitoring contractor, who was Tetra Tech. And then in 2021, we completed in the spring our RFP process to identify Series Environmental, who was our debris removal contractor. And so what happened after Ida, and is what is supposed to happen with debris, is we hired these very knowledgeable and experienced contractors who come in, they're right on site, the morning after they were here after Ida. They helped to develop a plan based on what the debris actually looks like, because again, flood debris might look very different than hurricane or wind debris. And so, as I said, there's a lot of variations to what can happen, and so having those debris contractors right there, boots on the ground, looking at what needs to be done, is valuable. And so that's how we determine how to move forward. So I've asked Kevin Sudbury from Series to come tonight to kind of give you a presentation of his methodology for how he assesses post-event and decides how, determines how debris should be addressed. So he's got a PowerPoint for you guys.
Yes. If you could just state your name, your position, and the company name, we appreciate that.
Certainly. Kevin Sudbury, Project Manager, Series Environmental Services. All right. So Erin did ask me to come here today, and not so much as a recap of Ida, but more as a, let's talk about what the planning process looks like, both from what we call in the sunshine, which is right now, we don't have a storm on the horizon, and what actually takes place when I step foot on the ground. At this current time, I would be the project manager to come back. I'm the most familiar with the community. We've dealt with all the situations and challenges, and as Erin said, you learn something new every time. Every community is different, every storm is different, every situation is different. Oh, went too far. There we go. So when we talk about the initial considerations, when we talk about an event, as Erin mentioned again, we've got hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, derachos, which are not listed up there, ice events, as we've seen a little bit of cold weather this past winter. So there's a variety, and that doesn't account for the fact that sometimes there are minor impacts. An EF1 tornado is gonna have a different impact than an EF5, okay? Cat 1 hurricane is gonna have a significant difference than a Cat 3 or 4, as Ida was when it came through Covington. So it's difficult, when it comes to debris, to say, "Here's the plan," because every time, it's gonna be different. If the tornado comes through the north part of town, there is nothing in the south, or vice versa, right? So that's a different set of planning, that's a different set of operations that are associated with that. Some of the things that can, again, impact a plan are the emergency services that are available. Did the PD station take a direct hit? What other local impacts do we have? Is the ground saturated? Is the flooding receded yet? Okay, so those are just some of the few things. Just in this example alone, 3 times 3 is 9. There's at least 9 variations. I could probably come up with 20 or 30 variations of what that plan might look like for the debris. So what are some of the keys to success? And I think probably the first and foremost is the recovery, right? We want to get life back to normal. But a very, very close second is maintaining your FEMA eligibility. I believe your total FEMA expense is not just for us, across the border, north of $5 million, and you guys would like to get every single penny of that back, that you can. So making sure that in this process, we are doing and taking all the steps to maintaining that eligibility through the entire time. We have to develop a real-time ops plan. My first day, we met in the parking lot up at the high school.
11:00 a.m.
Yep, 11:00 a.m. Ironically enough, I had the best cell service, so I became the hotspot for everybody to start making phone calls with. Just the way it goes, right? The city was able to get me maps. We were able to start the planning process on the tailgate of my truck. We talked about how to divide up the city for the push, and we'll talk a little bit more about what push is and what that process is. Another thing that can affect timing, which is completely out of our control, is the permitting process. A lot of people don't realize there's permits we have to get for this work. DEQ, LDEQ, has to permit your temporary debris sites. They're swamped. They're getting in that process immediately. There's some work you can do ahead of time, but sometimes this takes a little bit of time. So we can't even haul debris till those permits get in place. So that's something we have to consider. So that's something we have to consider and something that we have to work through. I can't say enough amazing things about your staff. Administration, Public Works, Fire, PD, they were all critical in getting this process kicked off. And our communications as a group was critical in making sure that we could move this whole thing forward. So we're here. We talked about planning. We've got some maps. Now we need to divide the city into some zones. And this looked different at three different periods during this recovery. When we did the initial push, we only had 12 zones. That's what made the most sense at that point. As I could get out, as the roads were opened up, and as I could start driving around as we were getting this process done, made the decision to divide the city up further into 18 zones. Okay? A little bit more control, a little bit more process, a little bit more. As we go, it's a little bit easier to track. In the end, we ended up with 20 because we took two of the zones that were some of the later ones to be served and split them up even further so that, again, we could get more resources in there, get more control, get more things going on. An important part of this process is utilizing quality control personnel. We had myself, as well as two other QC's on this project, to make sure that our folks were meeting the required standards, making sure that we were getting things done. These guys were driving behind the trucks. They were making sure that when piles were being picked up, they were being picked up appropriately. I'm not going to say no debris is ever skipped because sometimes there's a power line running through it. We can't touch those things. Right? So we make notes of it and we move forward for that. I mentioned the adjusting is necessary. Well, we went from 12 to 18 to 20 zones. Right? That's an example of that adjustment that happens on the fly. Resources are always critical, as the city is well aware. We make sure that we're allocating those. And probably the most hidden, yet out-there thing is our debris crews run seven days a week. We're running nonstop to make sure that this city is getting cleaned up as fast as it possibly can. Now, sometimes there's factors that affect that, traffic and some other things, and we'll talk about that. But that's something that is just a statement to the dedication that the folks that we bring in have. In fact, this past hurricane season, I spent 15 of 19 months in Louisiana, away from my house. So it's just the way this business is. Cover 360 is kind of my thing. Cover 360 is something that we're working on developing internally, and I really kind of honed this a little bit while I was here in Covington and with some past experiences. And that's just what it sounds like. We want to make sure we're looking at the entire process. Right? There's going to be hotspots. There's going to be issues that we need to address. There's going to be concerns. There's going to be traffic concerns and things. And we worked with the administration to address those in the most logical manner moving forward. Being aware of utility repair crews. A lot of times, while we were doing the push, and I'm going to go all the way back to push, there were Davy trucks here. I don't know how many people saw the bright green Davy bucket trucks and chipper trucks? Those weren't us. That's actually your utility company, particularly Cleco, coming in and doing the trees we can't do. That's them coming in and getting the trees off of the lines. They don't haul them away. They cut them and move them off the lines so that our crews can come in and do our work. So working, again, with those utility crews and making sure that we're not jamming up roads, making sure that we have ability for emergency personnel to access that stuff. Sometimes there's environmental or physical challenges. Perfect example of the physical challenges is it was very wet. And so we had to be careful hauling the debris to the DMS site. The site was a very good site, but as with most of this area in Louisiana, it's primarily clay. We know what happens to clay when it gets wet. It's challenging to drive on. It's challenging to work on. I have to take a look at the school and the traffic patterns. I have to make sure my trucks aren't in your school zones when they're active. Right? And that's discussions that we actively have once school gets back in session after a storm. We have to consider the socioeconomic impacts. We want to work across a spectrum of areas. We want to make sure that we are serving the entire populace at some level, making sure all of that is moving forward appropriately. Sometimes a city like this has a lot of events. We work around those events, particularly in the downtown areas, to try to make sure that we're not impacting those again with our workers. We mentioned weather and again, making sure that as quickly as humanly possible, we can get life back to normal. There we go. So some non-disaster-driven challenges that are specific to the city. And these are part of the things that we have to make sure we include in our planning process. Part of the city has narrow roadways and narrow right-of-ways. When we come through with our push crews, we do our best not to push the debris and opening up the roads onto private property. Right? But where there's not a lot of right-of-way, it can be challenging to stack that debris up. So maybe on a particular road, we're only able to open up one or one and a half lanes of access. It's not ideal, but it's better than zero lanes of access until we can get in there and get that debris removed. A problem that plagues all of Louisiana is low utility lines. These low utility lines make it difficult for the trucks to get in, and sometimes we have to change the scale and scope of the equipment we're using. We have to use smaller equipment that can get under it without tearing lines down. I can tell you, I feel for it every time I hear, and I'm not going to say we haven't hit them because we've hit them, and I feel so terrible for the residents because they just got their internet back and we took it down. That's why I have contacts at AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Comcast, a variety of them, so I can try to get those things resolved as possible. But it's a challenge that we faced here in Louisiana. Covington is uniquely situated as far as the road network is concerned. Everybody knows how the traffic is in the morning and the afternoon around the outskirts of the city. 437 was the main road to our DMS site, and as you can imagine, 437 was a heavily traveled road as it is even during non-storm. So again, these are make sure, these are all of our considerations. We have to make sure that what we pick up is eligible. Unfortunately, during storms, sometimes people will take the opportunity to clear a little land. Okay? We want to make sure that this, we're not picking up debris that the city shouldn't be paying to pick up. Right? That comes down to that FEMA eligibility. The monitoring company is heavily involved in that, but we do have a natural responsibility to make sure that's the case. Again, the wet weather, the local ground conditions, and the time of year, these are all things that can't be accounted for in a plan. These are all things that can be considered, can be contemplated, but can't necessarily be changed. Ah, darn it. So, real quick, because I don't want to take up a whole bunch of time, this is the process we go through. Okay? We do an initial survey, which of course, limited access. We've got roads that are blocked when we do that. It's right after meeting. And we bring the push crews in. These push crews come in, they open up the road. The goal is to have a lane to a lane and a half access on every road. We'd love to open up two lanes on every road. Sometimes it's just not possible. Physical constraints simply prevent it. But we want to make sure that emergency personnel and utility restoration crews can get in. That's our goal with push. During that process, that's where that real-time beginning plans. As more overroads open up, the more I can see, the more I can evaluate, the more we can put that plan together and go through that process. That push only occurs for 70 hours per FEMA guidelines that are reimbursable. So generally, it's seven, 10-hour workdays. We were able to accomplish the city's push in four. And part of that time, we spent informally, working with the utility crews to open up some of the roads in some of the areas that they needed access because, as I mentioned, they don't haul the debris, but we were able to move some stuff for them. Then we go into the debris removal. The planning evolves. Talked about, we went from 12 to 18 to 20. Right? That planning process evolves. Because of the way we handled things, Cleco unexpectedly to us, moved a bunch of resources in right after push because we were able to open up so much of the roadway and they were able to get better access in. So they diverted, as we found out later, they diverted resources from other communities to Covington to be able to get the restoration process kicked off. We pick up the beds, the CND, the leaners, hangers, and white goods. We take it, we grind it, and it goes to final disposal. So that's the typical hurricane process in a nutshell. The key message here is that planning goes on throughout the whole situation. It changes. It evolves. We work with staff across the board, and we make sure that we're providing the best possible service to the city. Some people like visuals, so this same thing I just said, just kind of visual. That picture actually up at the top left was Bogafalaya. The last day of push, the water had finally receded enough, we could get down there. We get the push crews in. We've got debris hauling on the right. On the left is that reduction process. And in the middle is kind of a screenshot of some reporting that I do to make sure that the city is current with the process. It's an excerpt of the mapping process, the zoning process that we did for this project. And so it's just kind of a visual representation of everything I just talked about. Last slide, I promise. So a quick recap on Ida. We were able to complete the push in four days. And as we understand from Cleco, the city was 84% electrically restored within six days after the storm. I had informal conversations with some of their folks. That's how I found out some of the information about them reallocating some folks, and I believe there were some city conversations as well. You guys were ahead of the curve in that regard as far as restoration is concerned. We did collect nearly 160,000 cubic yards. The easiest way to think of a cubic yard is a washing machine or a dryer. So we collected the equivalent of 160,000, give or take a few of those. We got rid of over 2,400 overhead hazards or hazardous trees. So these are things that as people are driving or walking, pose a hazard to them from that. And we completed the entire collection process in 71 days. So, and if you... And one of the most important factors, and we've been working with Aaron on this, is we've maintained FEMA eligibility on all the work we've done. So FEMA's always had some questions. They always do. And we've worked with the city to provide answers to those questions, and they have been satisfactorily accepted by FEMA. And that's all I've got.
We appreciate it. That's educational for all of us, the public and the council, too. I know Council Clerk Joanne Rucker is going to give us a copy of the plan, which we have a copy of.
I have a couple more minutes.
Yes. And then also, and let's face it, there was a challenging storm. It was a storm that the city hadn't seen and who knows when. So, that being said, you have any other comments?
Yeah, so I just wanted to tell you where we are today in terms of preparing for this hurricane season for 2022. So I mentioned that we have a preseason checklist. And so what we do is we update the plan every spring. We meet with pertinent staff to go through our plan, which we completed that internal meeting on May 11th. And so what we have done is go through our checklist, which includes making sure all of our contracts and agreements are in place, and we make contact with those contractors. Public Works has been in the process, and I believe it's pretty close to checking and fixing any drainage blockages in our major drainways. And so that's been underway for some time. We have obtained preauthorization from DEQ for our debris site, which we do every year, just ahead of time to make sure we're good to go. We check our supplies. We check, make sure all of our generators are operational, and we update our emergency staffing roster. I have asked Jim O'Barry, Chief Farrell, and tonight we have Stephen Michelle, as well as Chris Brown, to attend the meeting in case you guys had any questions about any specific departments and how they prepare and what their role is and that sort of thing. So we're all here to answer any questions you have.
This from the council, for anyone at this point?
I got a couple.
Sure. Councilman Smith.
One comment. Kevin, I hope we don't have to see you for a while.
Respectfully submitted, I feel the same, sir. I mean, I never want to show up.
You talked about our essential staffing. Okay, so I'm assuming every department has a different number of essential personnel or emergency personnel, right? Where, I know at our old barn, before we built a new one, we actually, Chris Davis took the initiative to build bunk beds. Okay? So where does the emergency personnel stay if they're required to be here during a storm?
So the fire department stayed at the fire department. The police department stayed at the police department. Public Works stayed at the barn on air mattresses. And the, any admin staff that was here had the option to stay at City Hall or to stay in their home. So we basically hunker down in the buildings, electricity or no electricity, and we did, we work very long days through the heat.
And from Chris, or whoever would like to comment, how sturdy and safe did you feel in that barn?
It's been a long time.
All right. That barn makes me nervous and it makes...
Other question. Are any of us emergency personnel or essential personnel?
I'm essential. I'm sorry.
Well, you were obviously essential, all of you.
We did a Zoom meeting.
No, so we don't want to keep people in town that aren't absolutely essential for making sure that what the wastewater treatment plan is operating. Of course, first responders, it's all hands on deck, and we ask them to shelter in place. We take them away from their families and their properties, and we compensate them to do that, and FEMA reimburses it, us, for doing that. We do everything we can to make them as comfortable as possible. But again, we don't want to keep anybody that isn't absolutely necessary in place. So everybody has the option to evacuate unless they're on that essential list. You guys are not. You're welcome to stay. But we just want to keep people who are absolutely essential here.
You know, I think a public announcement's coming from Councilman Smith here. If you have the means, if you have access to evacuate, my recommendation is to evacuate for a week or so. And I'm sure that makes things easier on folks like yourself. Okay? When you have less traffic, less thing. And those that can't or don't have the means to evacuate, you're not taken away from the resources that are here. You know, the ice at Acquistapace, the drinking water, the, you know. It just makes sense that, you know, I personally, I took, I took, I was attacked, okay, because I evacuated. Mark, I think you sent me a couple of pictures. Man, look at the signs. You know, but, you know, people need to understand, you can't take these things lightly. And if we get a hurricane category 2, 3, 4, God forbid, a 5, this city doesn't really need you here. Okay? You need to be in a safe place. Okay? But the essential personnel, man, God bless you guys, and thank you all for what you do. And it's a great plan. I'm glad you guys have taken the initiative to get everything rolling and put in place. Thanks.
And before we move on, I have a comment really quick. I know Councilman Barrett has a comment, and Councilman Roberts. I think the public really doesn't understand how huge this is. And I think there is inconvenience, and maybe your debris wasn't picked up first, or somebody has to be first, somebody has to be last. Right? So I think, you know, we have to have faith in the administration and the workers that they are doing the best they can with this. And it's complex. And I think the administration was on the ball on this. You know, we were probably the only municipality in this area that had trucks on the street the day after because we pre-planned to get them in place and get them ready to hit the streets. So we were really on the ball with that. And I appreciate everybody that's here today that helped out in any of our process for the city. Councilman Barrett, you had something?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to ask, we talked about FEMA reimbursement. Is there a status on FEMA reimbursement?
Yes. So glad you asked. So this is a daily activity for me and in my office. We have altogether 12 projects for Ida-related damage that goes anywhere from staff costs to debris, which is our big-ticket item, to damage in parks, to roads that had damage, guardrails, whatever. So all of those have been submitted to FEMA, and a lot of them have completed the FEMA process and now are with GOSEP. So it's federal dollars that funnel through the state before they come to us. The majority of the funding, or the majority of the claims, had to do with debris. So altogether, the city spent about $5 million recovering from Hurricane Ida. Almost four and a half of that is in debris. And so at this point, it's considered a large project with FEMA, and as of today, our largest project is at the Congressional Delegation Review. So I reached out to their offices, their staffers, to ask them if they need anything in their review. And then from there, it's going to go to GOSEP, where we then complete the review all over again at the state level. So it's going to be a little bit of time before we start seeing that money coming in, but I can assure you, every day, there's movement on at least one of those 12 projects. And we work very closely with FEMA.
Now, when we say we're at $5 million, or four and a half for debris, Kevin, you said completed collection in 71 days.
Correct.
In 71 days, we racked up 4.5 million?
That's not all, ma'am, sir.
Some of that's the Tetra Tech debris monitoring as well.
All right. And so, when you say completed collection in 71 days, I think it's important to note you were finished in 71 days, right?
That was the collection process. There were some things that the public didn't see that were going on at the debris management site when we finished grinding and haul out that took a few additional days. That is a reference merely to the collection of the debris off of the streets and into a debris management process. As I said, I was here for about another eight or nine days after that process while we finished grinding, reducing, and then hauling out to final disposal. But that process was invisible to the residents.
And then, Mayor, you talked about generators and we did that in the budget. Is there an update as to where we are with that process?
Yes, that's actually coming on very nicely. We've replaced a couple of older generators with new generators specifically at the wastewater treatment plant and at one of the water wells. We've taken the older generators and mounted those on trailers that we had existing. One of those will be able to pop back and forth between Nose Park and Barclay Park's lift stations. The other one, same idea. So, and we've got everything piggy-tailed so that you can just pull up to a generator and plug it in. And our new generator purchase is multi-phase, so it can operate whether it's one of the heavy-duty lift stations or whether the lower-end lift stations. So, I feel much, much better about our generator situation than I did during the last storm. And kudos to Public Works because they made it work last time. And if I may take this moment, I'd like to give a special shout out to Fire Chief Gary Blocker and his experience from Hurricane Katrina, because he's the one that said the first thing fire does is come out of the fire station with their tractor and their chainsaws and start working down Jefferson Avenue. Kudos to Public Works Director Chris Davis, who said the first thing they do is come out of the Public Works barn and start going down Tyler to the hospital. And so, they both came down Jefferson and Tyler, connected Eighth. Next time, we will connect Eighth to Janky, which was a good suggestion that we have received. And then they started working on 21st Avenue. So, kudos to Erin Bavona because she had done the RFP that put series in place and had boots on the ground that morning, 11 o'clock Monday morning after the hurricane. He was able to drive through and start assessing. Push crews started showing up and moving things. By Wednesday, Cleco does, I'm presuming, a flyover and says, hey, look at Covington, their streets are clear, we can work there. And that's why we ended up with over 60 power line trucks in Covington on Wednesday after the storm. And they were here for three or four days, full blast. And then I could slowly start seeing them disappear to other areas. But I think the number was 11 days, was it 11? Our power, they practically rebuilt our power grid during that time. But it goes all the way back to Gary Blocker, Chris Davis, and Erin. The work they did ahead of time is what put Cleco in that position. So, I'm very grateful for that. Councilwoman Ludwig?
Yeah, I was actually just going to reiterate that, that I was in college during Katrina, but I think, I remember talking to Chief Blocker and he said, God, people are complaining about their power after a week. And he's like, we didn't get power back after Katrina after a month. And obviously, as you said before, every storm is different. But I do think it speaks volumes of y'all's preparedness and reacting or, excuse me, proactivity.
And as we know, when no one has power, it's okay. It's when your neighbor gets power and you don't that it starts to become a problem.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Okay. Thank you so much. Well, I didn't get that far quite yet. I was thanking him. So, we appreciate the administration's comments. Is anybody from the public that wants to have a comment? Can you come up to the podium if you don't mind? I know you're going to love me for this, right? And state your name and address, please, for the record.
Jan Butler, 259 North Buchanan. And I just wanted to have the full circle to know, once the material is ground, then where does it go?
There you go, that's good.
So, in this particular case, the debris was disposed of at a primarily agricultural site for beneficial reuse as soil augmentation.
Was that local or is it on state?
It was here local. It was not within the city per se, but it was within the parish.
Thank you for that. Yes, ma'am, if you want to come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin, I have some concerns because like the first thing you're saying is that you want to maintain...
Could you state your name and address for the record if you don't mind?
Oh, I'm Margot Dandry, okay? And I live on Washington and Eighth, okay? I didn't get power for 11 days, okay? And our debris removal was two and a half months, so I guess it was right at the 71 day. I'm just a little flustered right now, is my problem. Excuse me. I live on the corner of Eighth and Washington, which is a major artery. And we didn't get power for 11 days. We were in a bottleneck, okay? And I'm grateful, Mayor, that you've extended the clearance to Janky because it will make a big difference. The reason I'm concerned is the FEMA eligibility, to maintain FEMA eligibility, none of, he's, all the explanation he gives uses none of the FEMA operations and terminology. And FEMA tells us, we have to do like they tell us to or they're not going to pay us. So, I'm a little confused and concerned. There are two parts to the debris removal operations. One of them is the response operation, which has to occur right away, and it clears the major arteries and through fair so that our community can get to the hospital, to the public, so that ambulances can reach us. And fortunately now, that, we'll be able to do that on Eighth. And then the rest of the operations is the recovery. So, I never hear FEMA talk about zones and how we, the priority in which we do zones. They give lists that tells us the priority that must be done for us to be reimbursed. And I guess my question is, if, how far does the consult go? We kind of missed the boat on what the, what response operations are. We say it's just to be able to go rescue people. That's not at all what it is. That's what our debris management guide says. FEMA tells us that it has, it's our plan, it's our whole plan. It tells us what streets are considered to be the major arteries that take us to the places we need to go. So, I'm a little confused about all this, frankly. You know, there are certain things that we have to do to be paid. And I've read the FEMA manual like three times, and this is so different that I'm puzzled. You know, can you help me? I want to understand, it's for our community.
So, I think there's a couple of things to take into consideration. One, there's a monitoring firm that makes sure all of our activities are eligible, okay? So, there is an independent third party that verifies what we do and verifies that those activities are eligible. As far as the response and what might be in FEMA 325, there are also additional guidance, what we jokingly refer to as the PAPA-G, which is P-A-P-P space G. That is another document that provides guidance as well as numerous, excuse me, memorandums that have been issued since 325 was issued and most recently updated. So, there's a variety of things that come into play. But again, the city went through an RFP process and they selected a very good monitoring firm in Tetra Tech to verify what we're doing as we go through that process. The streets across the entire city were opened up to a minimum of one lane travel four days after the event. That's what our push crews do. The city goes out and verifies that we have 70 working hours to accomplish that. It may not be ideal, I'll admit. Eighth Avenue, I would have loved to have pushed open two lanes there. But in order to have pushed open two lanes with the amount of debris that was there, would have required us shoveling debris into private residential neighborhoods and into their yards. This is typically not something we're allowed to do, we can't enter private property. Our goal is to gain and maintain access for those emergency vehicles, which we did do. I have the scratches on my personal truck, which is what I used in this response, to prove that it wasn't perfect. I know that, it's part of it. And there's not a community you're going to go to that's been impacted by a hurricane that gets full network of roadways back four days later. What we created was access for your emergency personnel to be able to get in to respond, access for the utility crews to be able to get in and respond. And it was all done in compliance with FEMA requirements.
So, that's me, sorry.
I thought the voice was coming from that way, my apologies.
During the course of Ida, that is probably my primary role is to work with these firms and make sure that we are, we're expending money, but we are also setting ourselves up to get that money back from FEMA. The work that is done by both of our debris firms, the monitoring and the collection, are reimbursable by FEMA. And I can tell you, I have, since Ida, I have had weekly scheduled phone calls every Friday with FEMA. And they have told us repeatedly that the way that we prepared our paperwork and what we have submitted is better than most communities and that they are very pleased with our level of coordination, our responsiveness, and everything that we've given them. So, I just wanted to, I understand Ms. Dandry's concern, and I just want to let you know that we are in a good place, that we have been working with FEMA consistently and they are very pleased with what we have submitted. We have never gone to what they call a formal request for information because every time they have a question, we have an answer back to them, usually within an hour. And they have been very impressed and very pleased with that. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you for that information. We thank the administration. We thank you so much for coming and any comments from the public. So, that being said, we'll get our manuals from Council Clerk Rucker and we'll get that probably next week, right? Thank you. Okay. That being said, let's move on. We do have an announcement. Councilman Smith is going to go ahead and talk about that?
Yes. Recently, it's been brought to the Council Finance Committee to our attention from our finance director, that we've got, we've got to consider renewing, okay? Renewing a bond, which is going to have to go before the voters. And this bond is ad valorem taxed. It's not going to be an increase to our residents, but it's something that needs to be renewed in order for us to continue to have a fire department that provides the services that they provide today. You know, we talked to our police chief. And in my opinion, nothing's more important to our quality of life than safety, okay? So, it's very, very important that we have the ability to fund our police department, I mean, not only our police department, but in this instance, our fire department. And for us to do that, it's government. You've got a lot of things you've got to do. You've got to get on the ball and start notifying people way ahead of time, okay? Now, this particular tax expires in 2024, if I'm not mistaken. I believe it is 2024. Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. Yes, the fire millage. The end of 2020, okay. But we need to consider, right now, adopting a resolution to present and put on the ballot for maybe, maybe, you know, from what I'm gathering, Mr. Hardy suggested the sooner the better, so, and he's our bond attorney, November, December, the end? Would you like to share that strategy as to when we need to get this on the ballot?
Yeah, Hardy Andrews with Foley New Dale in New Orleans. And like Councilman Smith said, we're helping you guys with this election as a special counsel, bond counsel. So, he was exactly right. Elections can be very tedious. They're not terribly, terribly complicated, but tedious is the best way to put it. What we're doing tonight, what you all are doing tonight, is just announcing the intention to consider calling or adopting a call resolution at your next meeting to go out for these elections that you just discussed. So, this is just the announcement, you publish in the paper, let the community know, hey, at our next meeting in July, we're going to consider this. So, this is just, at this point, it's just that first step in the process to get the ball rolling for December election this year.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. So, you can see it is tedious. So, we're just making an announcement that we're going to consider a resolution.
That is correct.
Okay? But it's something that we needed to do. So, I thank the finance director for pointing that out to us the other day. And Mr. Hardy, your explanation's wonderful. So, there it is, announced.
You did a good job, that's it. And we'll have more on this in July, of course, but thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go right into comments and reports. District A, I know Councilwoman Lewis isn't here tonight, but Councilwoman Ludwig or who has Peter's comment?
Peter gave it tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, we can, why don't you just do it when you do yours? Is that okay?
I never get to go first.
Oh, let's do it. Let's do it tonight. There you go.
All right, District A comments. City of Covington, Juneteenth celebration, that's the big one, June 18th. Peter Lewis wants to announce that it will start at 7:45 in the morning. It begins with the theme of One Love, creating unity and spreading love. 9:00 AM, it will be the Third Annual Freedom Parade. It will roll starting at Peter Atkins Park. It will end at Peter Atkins. The route can be found on the Juneteenth Facebook page. 11:00 AM, Juneteenth program begins and there will be special performances, an evening full of education, empowerment, and entertainment, food and games. Volunteers are welcome, so please look at the Facebook page. June 12th, starting at 4:00 PM, will be a One Covington in connection with the Department for Education Reform, will be an inaugural Junior Juneteenth Fashion Show. Location, the Furman Auditorium. There will be two sets, youth, 10 to 14, and junior, 15 to 18, and each will be judged separately. Winners will receive $1,500 for first place, $1,000 for second place for junior, and $250 and $150 for youth. And I would like to point out, these funds will be used for education advancement. He would like to specially thank One Covington, DFER, the City of Covington, NOLA Fashion Week, and all of the sponsors. Additionally, June 19th, starting at noon, will be a Father's Day pop-up shop at Bogachina Park in Covington. It'll have games, dance teams, performances. June 25th, starting at 7:00 PM, will be a Back to the Nineties fundraiser, a Sadie Hawkins Dance. Food, music, fun, and more. Location for that will be the VFW Ronald Reagan Highway. For more information, you can contact Project Blessing. June 26th, starting at 2:00 PM, Rock the Block Event, small business pop-up shop and networking. All are encouraged to attend and participate, and I thank Councilman Lewis for having those events. District E comments?
Would you go into District E? That'd be great.
That way, I don't have to, right?
Man, I kind of like this.
You're going to steal all our content.
Sometimes rotate this way, rotate, man.
We can do that, we can do that.
I mean, I'm dyslexic. We can start with E. Really, I only have one thing. This ain't John Fools or Mishraoul, I happen to serve as co-captain. We had Fools Fest in May. I'd like to announce two substantial checks are going to go to the Boys and Girls Club and the North Shore Food Bank. We will give those on those big fancy Lotto-looking checks on June 14th. And we wanted to thank the City of Covington Cultural Arts and Events for assisting us in putting that event on. Although it did rain, it was a lot of fun. And I think that this time, two great causes, and I wanted to thank everyone for their participation, their sponsorship, and we'll be back next year.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. We're going to move right to District C, and he's going to cover District B and C. Councilman Roberts?
Absolutely. District B, for Councilman Botzberg, who's out of town on business, so we wish him some safe travels. The North Shore Food Bank, he likes to give updates. So, for May, they have served 86 daily households on average and 102 daily boxes. That is down from May of 2021, where they served 105 daily households and 119. So, we're just encouraging everybody, as summer hits, to the donations, slow down for the food bank. So, please, if you can, donate food to the food bank, canned vegetables, canned fruit, cereal, rice, anything of those natures would help. If you want to know what else you can do, go to their website, www.northshorefoodbank.org. Or you can reach out to Ginger Conkle, she is the Community Engagement Manager. So, and I want to add to that, food, food distrib, food donations go down, but also blood donations. So, if you have a chance to find a blood donation space, go do it, and if not, host one. If you know a business that would like to host a food donation and blood donation, please reach out to them and let's find a place to make sure that we're serving communities that need the help. And then on that note, St. Tammany Chamber After Hours is on Thursday, that's this Thursday, June 9th, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. The North Shore Food Bank and On Path Federal Credit Union will be hosting a St. Tammany After Hours on Thursday. So, if you get a chance, go check out what they're doing today. That is District B. District C. All right. One, the tree board's been mentioned quite a few times. I just want to reiterate, there is a process for removing trees from your property. Please follow through with the city if you have questions to ask before you cut a tree down. We're trying to protect the integrity of what Covington looks like, and we order our trees. And so, I definitely want to make sure we preserve as many as we can. And if... as many as we can. And if it has a go, it has a go. But please let the professionals make that decision for us. There are bids out for Lurline. I don't know how much the mayor will go through this, but the bids out for our Lurline, we're waiting for those to get back on June 23rd, so we can start the repairs on that street. Redwood Drive Culvert is being replaced. So there is some rerouting of traffic over there, but that's going to help with the drainage. I want to say thank you to Public Works for clearing the canal that's between Kathleen and Ellen. That's a, it needed the help and y'all gave it to them. So thank you for getting the attention it deserved over there. That'll also help with drainage river of forests. Yesterday was D-Day. And I also want to make a comment. We just had Memorial Day. So anybody who serves and has served our country, thank you for stepping up and giving us the freedoms that we do. A lot of faceless heroes out there. I truly appreciate you all. And then, let me see. Oh, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the gentleman that is named the Eagle Scout that came through on 15th Street and put in the markers, please make a note of that when you make your comments. Just, there it is.
Congratulations to the Eagle Scout, Eddie DeHemincourt.
There we go. Very good. Yeah. So please, I saw him out there working. I blew the horn and I'm thinking, those guys think I'm crazy. But I was so proud of him out there putting it up. It looks great. And they're lit. So at night, you'll have these little quarter mile lit markers on there. So amazing opportunity for us in District C. Other than that, everything is, is great and moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to District D, Councilwoman Ludwig.
All right. I don't want to forget to the end of the council comments, but I just wanted to make sure I mentioned the unfortunate and sudden passing of Betty Cronin, who was larger-than-life in personality. But her dedication to the city as well as to all of her students, she was also very involved with the public school system. She was beloved by many, but especially her past students. So I just wanted to make sure we mention that. I know I'll personally miss her smile around town. She was a wonderful lady and will be greatly missed. As far as District D, texted Melissa over at the hospital. She said COVID numbers are once again on the rise, but St. Tammany is managing the increase well and fully able to continue caring for others, as well as St. Tammany and Coast are hosting a free luncheon Saturday called Living Life in a Post-Pandemic Reality. And you can register at sttammany.health/livinglife. Also in District D, the St. Tammany Parish Library has a lot of free summer activities. We are discussing things for the youth to do to keep them out of trouble. And they do have a lot. So you're welcome to go on their website and see the plethora of free programs and activities for everyone of all ages. Also, I wanted to mention all the kind of new traffic and, not traffic, sorry. We're doing some projects as there's less school traffic. So make sure you sign up for the Nixle alerts. Those have been really helpful with street closures, as well as the city administration is pretty good about communicating that in multiple forms. And what else? That's really it for actual District D stuff. Just, yeah, everyone have a safe summer. And I'm glad we seem to be in good shape for hurricane season because unfortunately, that's on the horizon. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And thanks for mentioning about Ms. Betty. Very nice lady and very involved in the community. Okay. Councilman Large Smith?
Well, all of our councilmen do such a great job covering their districts. There's not a whole lot to say. But I know it's redundant, but Ms. Betty, she had a huge, huge impact on so many people. I can't tell you how many of her former students just loved her. And all of them had stories, you know, about how she impacted them in such a positive way. So yes, she will be missed, never forgotten. But I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Couple of things real quick. I had an opportunity to participate in the Martin Luther King Jr. Children's Community Garden dedication on this Saturday. It's right across from the Greater Starlight Baptist Church. Let me tell you, these kids worked hard on this, on this garden. And they harvest some of the vegetables and they had a couple of, you know, Southern Hotel was out there. There was a couple of other people cooking the vegetables and sampling. And I just want to really give them, they did a great job. Just to kudos, they did a great job and the volunteers and the parents working with them. So that being said, that was, that was great attended by the community too. So I was glad to be part of it. Also, the CBA meeting is going to be on July 6th coming up. So if you mark your calendars, it's going to be Rockin' the Blues Cafe on North Columbia Street. Starts around 5:30. So mark your calendars for that because our meeting's a little late in July and I'll talk about that in a minute. But also, that's all I have. So we're going to turn it right over to Mayor Mark.
Thank you, Councilman Rowling and the council. Have a couple of little DOTD tidbits. As you may have seen on Facebook or in my e-blast, Louisiana Highway 25, the Folsom Highway, is currently closed this week near Lake Ramsey. So the alternate route there would be to take US 190 past Covington High School, out to Goodby, take a right on 1077, head north, and then you take a right on 1081 or Bennett Bridge Road or one of those to get you back to Louisiana 25. The DOTD is replacing a couple of culverts there. And hopefully, weather permitting, they'll be completed with that this week. Update on the Bogaflyer River Bridge. We have entered the molasses of the bureaucratic process. They have had, DOTD has had one planning meeting with the contractor that was selected, Boe Brothers, but they have not held a pre-construction meeting yet. Once the project is started, Boe Brothers will have 495 days to complete the new bridge. So just for all of us to keep in mind, we're looking at a couple of years. Regarding the Jefferson Avenue, 21st Avenue Roundabout, it's estimated to go to contract in the next two to three months. Once they've done that, DOTD will have a pre-construction meeting to discuss the contractor's game plan. It is anticipated that they will start construction this fall and finish before the end of the year. But we all know how I feel about construction timelines. I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on it. I'd also like to mention that July 2nd will be Sparks at the Park, which is going to be an awesome event with the hot dog eating. And I think they're replacing the children's watermelon possibly with pie this year, which is nice and stany and really looks good. But to come out and see the Covington Community Concert Band play at the park is really a treat. And when they finish that concert off with the fireworks synchronized to the music, it's a special event. It's a little piece of Americana right here in Covington. Just something that helps make Covington one of the coolest cities in America. Something else that does that is Eddie DeHemincourt, the Eagle Scout, who put in the mile markers along 15th Avenue Running Path and did a really nice job. Really well done. Also, a shout out to the 15th Street Flyers who are organizing their Fourth of July run and say that they're going to have enough participants to do that this year. And I'd like to finish off with a little talk about the cleanliness of the city. I think most people here know that I am a litterphobe. I absolutely despise litter. And I'm not just talking about the Burger King bag on the side of the road or the beer bottle, but I also don't like the corrugated plastic signs that the roofers nail to the telephone poles and the stump grinders. And I'd like to give thanks to Public Works for helping me with that. If you're riding around town and you see a house washing sign on the side of the road, stop, pick it up, throw it in your car. It's not supposed to be there. And if you take a look at the size of our roads today, you're going to see most of those signs are missing. If you do happen to put one out for a garage sale, that's wonderful. But I'd just ask that you pick it up after the garage sale. We've had a, I also consider litter, part of litter, bulk debris pickup. And our green waste recently has been brown. It has sat out on the street side so long that it's turned brown. And we actually have vines and grass growing up through it. Coastal Environmental Service does a wonderful job and their heart is in this. But like so many businesses today, they are faced with the lack of employees. And in this case, commercial licensed drivers. They go by on some days where they have boom trucks parked in the plant yard with nobody to drive them. And it's just very, very frustrating to me, but it's also very frustrating to Coastal. With that in mind, I gave it a little bit of thought. And Coastal, when they pick up our branches, when they pick up our leaves and load them on a truck, they drive them to a transfer station in La Combe. It's a 32-mile round trip. They're hauling our clippings to La Combe. And then an empty truck is coming back. I remembered as a child that the City of Covington had a dump near Lake Ramsey on MP Ponche Road. So I've made arrangements with Coastal where now they will be taking our green waste on a six-mile round trip right there to Lake Ramsey. And that's going to increase our efficiency greatly. In addition to that, because we're now taking their waste, they are going to pay us to dump their waste in our landfill. So this is going to be a win-win for us, a win for Coastal, and we should see an increase in efficiency and a decrease in, in fuel costs for them, as well as greenhouse gas emissions. So that's it here.
That's great news. Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor?
You bringing up the traffic stuff reminded me. When is, do we know when they're going to start the crosswalks by SSA and 15th? I've had a couple of people ask.
Callie Baker, our engineer, is on that. And it's, it's just so nauseating to say supply chain. But we have ordered the pieces to come in and we're waiting for those photo cell electronic crosswalk things. So I really wouldn't want to harbor a guess. But it's been budgeted, it's been approved, it's been ordered. And when it comes in, not only are we doing that crosswalk, but we're also doing one on 17th Avenue for William Pitcher, right there where those children go back and forth to the gymnasium. So we're going to knock those out.
Thank you.
And I'm glad the mayor did mention about Sparks in the Park. If you didn't go last year, it was a great event. The city did a great job on it. So mark your calendars for that. Anything for administration tonight?
Just real quick. I would like to congratulate the Johnson family for their imminent addition to the family coming up very soon. Karen's out of town for the new grandchild that's being born this, later this week, tomorrow maybe, right?
Probably tomorrow.
So congratulations. That's all.
Congratulations is right. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Before we, we adjourn, just a reminder, the July 2022 City of Covington Council meeting was changed from July 12th because of the Fourth of July holiday to now July 19th. So that meeting will be held here in the chambers Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And we will see you then. This meeting is adjourned.